Board of Education in public and it's not to be considered a public meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Turner?
Here.
This is Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the House of Representatives. In two republic states. One nation. Under God. In the heavens. For the religion of Jesus Christ.
Okay, was everyone able to look over the agenda? All right, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
We have a second? All right, moved by Dr. Turner, second by Mr. Kilgore.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? I'm sorry. Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. -- Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the minutes, please? From last month?
So moved.
Go ahead. Dr. Turner? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, do we have anything from the Mount Healthy Teachers Association? Do we have any announcements tonight? Okay, moving on to public input. We did have one submission from Deborah Harris. If you would like to go up to the podium and grab Dr. Wilson's microphone. Oh, is there one up there? Okay. I will start the timer for three minutes. If you could, before you begin talking, just let us know your name and the relationship with the district. Let me get my timer out really quickly.
So, my name is Deborah Harris and I am just a parent in the district that has kind of been -- I'm trying to involve a little bit more in the process of making sure that our children have a quality education.
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, first of all, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak. As you know, the last election period, we did not pass the law, but we were extremely close. So, I'm going to keep up hope and we just want to let you know that units are still organizing and still doing other things that we can possibly do to ensure that we get some dignity on that. So, thank you guys so much for all of your support. Kristen, thank you for your availability.
That, I feel like it's a collaborative thing that's really going to take multiple avenues to actually -- multiple avenues to actually being done. So, a few things that I wanted to address. I wanted to thank Dr. Carter, um, exactly here for the response to the, um, the issue that we had where there was lockdown because of the EDF problem. There was a need for communication and that's truly appreciated. That transparency is something that I can't express enough. So, I'm glad you're here. I had that in my notes. Didn't know that you wouldn't be here to hear that. But, um, there's additional safety concerns, specifically with traffic and with health regards at the Harrison and Adams intersection and the intersection at, um, Hamilton Avenue and, what's it called? Hamilton Avenue and Adams. So, a lot of kids were walking there. A lot of kids congregating there. A lot of train interactions coming there after during the drop-off time. So, that's something that we're going to ask the rest of the city council if we can get some assistance with securing some type of safe -- safety and traffic in that area. One thing that we wanted to highlight more of our students in the community, to get -- kind of get that community collaboration going as well. Those things are still really, really appreciated. I know that there was something going on with the December celebration that may or may not have had the choir removed, but know that there are student council, or not student council, but parent-teacher council formed at South that's trying to get parent engagement in that manner. Um, I know that there's some things going on at the high school where they're actually trying to get engaged and trying to get those types of committees formed across the district and work collaboratively to get parents truly involved. So, those are some of the things that we're doing. There are a few asks that we have for you. There was one mention that actually Will Carter brought across, and that was with Senate Bill 485, termed the Olivia Bill. Term the Olivia Bill. Um, we just ask that you continue to give us updates on that information. Continue to track attendance, especially with the winter time coming here. If there's any way to do comparisons on the attendance from this year versus last year with it being a walking district, um, that's just some of our concerns, especially with the winter months coming. So, I heard the little bell, so that's my time.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much. And I just want to say, I appreciate, or, you know, I can't speak for everyone, I'm sure we all do, but I appreciate the work that you're putting into just trying to be participating in so many different aspects of it and really trying to be involved. I wish there were more parents, maybe there are, but I wish there were more parents coming here and speaking on these things like you are right now. I really like to see that. Thank you. I've lost my space. Okay. Moving on to presentations, do we have any presentations?
We do. We have two presentations tonight. So, the first will be from Ms. Frederica Richardson, our food service director, and she's going to talk briefly about our requirements to meet nutrition standards. And then Kristen, Nancy and I are going to do a presentation on levy options for the May ballot.
Good evening. I don't have much to say, except for we are meeting nutrition standards here, but I thought maybe I should just explain to you why I'm up here and saying that. This is because I have to, as the superintendent's designee over the nutrition program here at Mount Healthy, it's my responsibility to make sure that we're meeting all of the USDA standards as far as it goes for like snacks and things like that. So, I just wanted to assure everyone that we are following and that we have adopted and that we are enforcing the nutrition standard policies that are required by the Ohio law for our meals as well at our ala part. And that's basically it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can always count on Michael to give the lights. Thank you. All right, can everyone see that okay? Perfect. We're going to go over quite a bit of information, so bear with us. We are going to give some time at the end of this presentation for community questions. Probably five to 10 minutes for questions. And then there will be open board discussion following the presentation. I do want to let everyone know that we will -- the board will not be taking a vote on this tonight. So, tonight we are presenting the information. And then we intend to put out a notice for a special meeting. The board will vote on what exactly is going to go on the May ballot on Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. So, that notice for that special meeting will be coming out likely tomorrow morning. So, I just wanted to let everyone know that. So, let's get into it. We are going to be talking about a May 2026 levy of some sort to attempt to bring in more revenue to the district. I want to talk a little bit first about our current financial context, which for a lot of us is our daily life. But just as a reminder of kind of where we've been and where we're headed, we are, of course, in a fiscal emergency currently. And we do operate currently with a state-appointed Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. The commission does meet monthly following our board meetings. So typically, the week following the board meeting, the commission does meet and they review everything that the board has approved that has anything to do with finances. So, any contracts, any purchase orders, any staffing, any -- anything that has to do with finances, they -- the commission reviews and has to take a vote on as well. One of the prerequisites of being released from fiscal emergency is that we have to have an absence of deficit spending. And I'll show you exactly where that deficit spending line is on our forecast here in just a moment. For a minimum of three years and up to five years. And it's at the state auditor's discretion. So, we're always just kind of trying to keep in the back of our head what exactly has to be done to get us out of this fiscal emergency so that we can try to get as back to normal as possible in our district. Our current forecast, which we'll look at in just a minute, does not include any base or step increases for our staff. And we have spent a lot of time talking about this. We are on a salary, a pay freeze. It has impacted our ability to hire staff and our ability to retain staff. And that will continue to be an issue that we face if we cannot find a way to get that back into our forecast. And then the other key point that I want to highlight is that we have not had an operating levy in this district since 2003, which means essentially that we've had no additional local revenue since that time. Expenses have continued to go up. Inflation has happened, but our local share has stayed the same in terms of taxpayer dollars.
Okay, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the budget that we're under with the state right now. Many of you have probably heard that the fiscal year we're in now and this next year is the two-year budget cycle at the state. And you probably remember all of the cuts that we had to do to get where we needed to be to keep functioning. And I wanted to let you know that this amount adds to those costs. So, if we had this amount that we were depending on, kind of, prior to the biennial budget, we might even be in better shape. But because some school districts across the state, us being one of them, had to deal with these bu -- these budget -- budgetary cuts from the state, we wanted to just be clear that this is also something that we're contending with. It's kind of outside of our control.
And we will have a new biennial budget. So, one thing that's tricky about our forecast is that in the middle of it, we will have another budget from the state. So, we try to do as best we can on the predictions and assumptions, but depending on what happens with legislation, things can go a different direction. So, this is our current effective millage for operating costs. The total gross mills, which is the total amount of millage that was voted on over the course of time, is actually 66.91 mills. The total amount that we are actually collecting right now, or our effective mills, is just 23.81 mills. That is due to rollbacks, due to House Bill 920. And essentially, what that means is that our millage has eroded all the way down to 23.81 mills. And taxpayers are paying far less currently than what was originally voted on because of those rollbacks and credits due to House Bill 920. And again, like I said before, that's no growth essentially for two decades.
Okay, this is our current financial forecast. If y'all remember, we submitted this to the state in October. Our fall forecast shows our revenues over the next four years. This year, '27, '28, and '29. You can see the numbers that we've predicted across time. You can also see our deficit spending over time. Can also see our fund balances over time. So, basically, what's really nice about this visual with the red and the green, it shows us where we are right now in this forecast. And it gives us a foundation to compare it against actuals as time goes by as well. Okay? So, part of our job, our roles and responsibilities through -- working through our fiscal emergency is to make everything as green as we can, right? That's the goal as time goes by. We have talked a lot about how we're good for this year and we're good for next year, and that's these two numbers right here. All of the cuts that we made, all of the reductions in spending that we've made, even against that 2 million or so cuts from Columbus, has landed us right here. Okay? As you see, though, as years go on, we turn over to red in our current forecast. All right, our next forecast will be in the spring.
Perfect, thank you. This is line 6.010 that I was talking about. So, this is what the commission refers to as the deficit spending line. This line has to have minimum three years in the green, up to five years in the green at the auditor's discretion before we can be released from fiscal emergency. So, current forecast is showing all years in the red for deficit spending. And you can see, these are revenues, these are expenses. Our expenses are still outpacing our revenues. And that's what's reflected here along with the payment that we make to the state for the solvency assistance loan. So, the solvency assistance being extended out eight years has helped us tremendously. However, next year, this year, our payment is $750,000. Next year, it jumps to 1.2 million. And then for the remainder, the remaining term of that solvency assistance, it goes up to 1.6 million. So, this line right here has to have enough in it to cover that payment. So, again, this model assumes only current expenses, so this is no new programming. Very limited inflation. Our forecasting model does include some inflation, but not as much as what we will likely see. It's very conservative. And then no base or step increase for staff. So, we really, I mean, the -- there are very limited options for schools to increase revenue, and so there is no other way for us to do that other than having something on the ballot in May. And then Kristen's going to talk a little bit about what our forecast would have looked like had the three-mill levy passed, which is what we had on the ballot in November, last May, and the previous November.
Right. So, if you look at this right off the bat, you can see that there's a little more green than the last. And the greens are coming across this revenues over expenditures row, just how we want that pattern to increase. It would have helped somewhat with that. And also with our fund balances here, look at that. It would have made us green all the way through '28 with a red in '29. So, this three-mill would have helped us, but it really wouldn't put us where we need to be to move towards solvency. Okay? Again, the goal is greens.
Okay, so, given this information, we -- what we really need to talk about as a district and as a board and as a community is identifying a solution that not only provides enough revenue for the district to operate and build in some base and step increases for our staff, but also is mindful of taxpayers' tolerance for additional taxation. Some key considerations that we need to think about. First, our financial need, which is what we have kind of just gone through and demonstrated for you. Second, voter trends. We've had a three-mill levy on the ballot for three levy cycles now. We have come a long way with the help of our parent advocates and our staff and different folks in the community. We've come a really long way with engaging with the community and closing that gap, that margin. We were down to just needing 269 votes was the official count for the actual levy. So, we came very close compared to last May and the previous November. Much, much further along now than we were then. But then also, community sentiment. So, many of you have probably seen in the news and just with politics in our state, there is a lot of negativity and negative sentiment in general around property taxes in our state. There are four bills currently headed to our governor that deal with property taxes in our state and trying to reduce the property tax burden on our taxpayers. Unfortunately, that is something that has really happened over time where the state has shifted the burden from residents and taxpayer -- or from businesses to residents. So, in the past, you would have seen businesses paying more and having more of that tax responsibility, but now that is all landing squarely on the shoulders of our taxpayers. And so, we are -- we're counting on our taxpayers to fill that gap between what the state is providing in foundation funding and then what they've taken away in terms of taxation on businesses. So, this is scenario one. And we worked extensively, Kristen and I, have worked extensively with Forecast Five, which is a local organization that does projections and modeling trends for school districts across the state. So, we worked with Forecast Five to identify what is really the smallest amount of reasonable millage that will get us close to where we need to be. Now, as you can see, there are still red on this forecast. It's much smaller, so we're -- we got this to green here. This is down to $21,000. This still, even with a 5.95-mill levy, would still require us to make some cuts. As a school district and as your treasurer and superintendent, we do not believe that much more than this would be tolerated well by our voters. So, but we know that we also need the revenue. So, we worked really hard with Forecast Five to come up with a number that would get us in the vicinity of where we need to be, knowing that we would still have to make cuts. So, we're still taking on some of that burden as well in terms of making cuts. So, this is, like I said, a 5.95-mill levy, which obviously is an increase from what we asked for last time. The estimated annual revenue from a 5.95-mill levy is at the bottom there in the yellow,
Sure. So, one of the questions of property taxpayers, AKA homeowners, is always, what will this cost me monthly? And what will this cost me annually? All of this is based on home value. And you can see here that we've put a range of average home values that are in our community, coupled with the annual cost and the monthly cost for this cost to our taxpayers. So, $17.33 is what the cost is for $100,000 monthly, $26 on a $150,000 home, $34.67 on a $200,000 home, and $43.33 monthly on a $250,000 home. And these are our annual total costs here.
Additionally, I do just want to point out that these are approximate. So, I want to be really clear that once the board does pass a resolution to move forward with putting something on the ballot, we will send that over to the county and they will certify the actual amount. So, we're basing this on the certification from the last levy. There has not been a new valuation or a new assessment in our county. So, we think that this is probably going to be what it is, but I don't want anyone to say, "Well, you said it was only going to be that." Because we just want to make it really clear that it still has to be certified.
The auditor always certifies it every time that there's a -- even an ask for a levy.
So, that's scenario one. Scenario two is something that we have not talked about before in this district. However, we wanted to bring this scenario forward because of what I spoke about previously, the sentiment around property taxes and the tax burden that is being placed on our residents and homeowners, not just in our district, but really across the state. So, we wanted to bring this forward as a potential option. This option is a .75% earned income tax. And that would generate a little slightly more than what 5.95 mills would generate. So, it's the equivalent of a little over six mills is what this would generate. And you can see that at the bottom, 3.3 million. It gets us a little further into the green on our deficit spending line. So, it gets us into the green through FY '28. And so, then we would really be looking at FY '29 in terms of eliminating our deficit spending. All four years of the forecast, though, would be in the green in terms of our ending cash balance, which is a big difference from the past forecasts that we've looked at. So, what is an earned income tax? Let's talk about that a little bit. Let me get to this. So, these are the items that count as earned income. Wages, salaries, tips, commissions, self-employment, partnership income. So, any income that's reported on a W-2 or a Schedule C or SE for self-employed individuals. So, not people who are retired. So, that's a point that I want to be really clear about. This, unlike property taxes, does take that burden off of folks who are retired and who might be on a fixed income. So, let's go back and just summarize. So, again, scenario one, a 5.95-mill continuing property tax. The annual revenue is there. All property owners would pay that tax. And likely renters as well indirectly through costs that landlords pass on to them. It is based on your taxable property value. And one thing that I think is important to keep in mind is that voter familiarity with this type of a levy is high. We have done a lot of voter education and a lot of community engagement around property taxes in this district. And we did only fail the last levy by 269 votes. So, that is something that's important to keep in mind. However, the impact on retirees is nothing. Or the impact on retirees, sorry, for the property tax is something because they will pay as homeowners. Or if they're renters, they would pay through their property owner or through the property owner. So, this does impact retirees. And we do have a large retiree population in Mount Healthy that tends to turn out to vote. And then the messaging around this is just, it's a traditional property tax levy. It's a continuing levy, which means it's ongoing, and it's for operating expenses for $100,000 home. The cost is about $208 a year or $17 a month. And then scenario two, here's the one that does not impact retirees, is .75% earned income tax. So, the annual revenue is there, $3,303,278. It's about $135,000 more. It's about $135,000 more revenue in revenue per year than 5.95 mils. So it is slightly more revenue for the district. The folks who would pay for this are residents with earned income and only residents. So unlike the city tax, which the Mount Haly city tax impacts people who work in Mount Haly and people who live in Mount Haly, the school district earned income tax only impacts Voter familiarity is low for an earned income tax for a school district. So that is an important consideration. This would be our first income-based levy. However, it could be attractive to seniors because their retirement income is exempt. They would essentially pay zero for this levy if you're on a pension or have social security. So the messaging is there. This is a tax-only on earned income, and if you're retired and living on social security or pension, it does not tax that income. And I do want to point out, this is different than federal adjusted gross income, which is the result of when you do your taxes, you end up with your AGI. This tax is not on that. It is actually on your earned income. So just a little bit of a difference there. And then we have gone over this slide, what counts as earned income. And then we're going to open it up to questions. So I think if the board is comfortable with about 10 minutes of questions, whether they're from the board or from our audience, our public here, we'll be happy to take questions and try to talk through answers, and then we'll open it up to board discussion. Yes?
Have you looked at other districts that earned income? And what kind of respond or response have they had?
So there are just over 200 districts in our state who are using some sort of income tax. Now, they're not all an earned income tax. Many of the early adopters for an income tax in school districts were like more rural communities where they had lots of farmland, but we're starting to see this pick up in the state as a viable option because of what's happening with property taxes. So I spoke with a levy expert today, someone who has run levies for schools for years, works for a nonprofit agency here in Ohio, and what they're actually suggesting to all of the school districts they work with right now are earned income taxes because of exactly what we talked about, voter sentiment around property taxes, all of the legislation that has been popping up around property taxes. There's a movement in the state to eliminate property taxes in November that could potentially be on the ballot. So there's a lot of uncertainty there to where more and more districts are looking into the income tax route instead. Good question.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on that, I'd say about 10 years ago, if you asked how many income-based levies there were, it would be like, I don't know, I gotta look, there's maybe a handful. And now there's over 200. So the interest in it and the support of it has really increased in our state over time.
Yes.
So we wouldn't have the state that's saying to do this, the state is trying to repair that, this would be us putting a levy that would be an earned income tax.
Correct. So in the state, it's not necessarily the state that's trying to get rid of property taxes, but there's a movement in our state that is collecting signatures, that's trying to put an initiative on the ballot in November to eliminate property taxes. What legislators will say is that the four bills that have passed and that are on their way to the governor are in an effort to curtail that movement and provide some relief to taxpayers, which it does look like they are going to provide some relief to taxpayers. And they tried to adjust them based on feedback from superintendents and treasurers across the state so that the impact on schools wouldn't be as negative as when they were first introduced. Yes?
Has the district ever considered like a four-day week and would that help with operating costs?
Not yet. So I will not say not ever, but we, what we did not long ago was change our calendar and reduce our total number of student days. So we extended each day to an eight-hour day for staff and a slightly longer day for students so that we have 163 student days compared to other districts who may have like 175. So that's how we sort of adjusted that and addressed that. We have not looked at a four-day week or figured out what those costs would look like, but certainly is something that could be up for discussion. I know our neighbor district over at North College Hill does have a four-day school week, and I'm not sure what kinds of benefit they're seeing in terms of finances. Good question.
I know we just missed by 269 votes last time. What do you see as the contributing factors? It kind of brought, you know, that gap was wide, and you got it close. What do you see that has got us that close, and what do we need to do to get us over the hump?
Yeah.
I know scenario two there. I mean, I've been a resident for 40 years, I'm retired, and I don't think you guys or else as a group should ever pass with us, especially getting this close. So I think moving forward, how do we get that message to some of the retirees in this town? Because, you know, stronger school districts are going to make stronger cities.
Right.
We're that close. So I don't know what we can do to get us there, but...
Yeah, we are very close.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, because I looked at scenario two, and the residents might be thinking that they're trying to get one over on us here because the last time it didn't last. You know, you're going to try to shift gears here and do something like, do something different, but I think just being that close, you know, would be the...
And that's, yes, we've been having a lot of conversation about that within the district, and I've talked to some of our community partners about that. And then that is actually what I spoke with the levy expert about today, too, because I said, we're so close, it seems like we're just right there. And what the levy expert actually said was, it doesn't matter how close you are, all of this legislation about property taxes and all of this terrible way that it's being portrayed in the media means that you have a better likelihood of passing the earned income. And that we would then just have to educate our voters about what the earned income tax looks like and make sure that we specifically talk to our retirement community, our folks in our community who are retired, to help them understand that it's not falling, that burden is not falling on their shoulders. I do attribute the ability to close the gap to the district's engagement with the community. That has been a concerted effort of Kristin and myself since we came into our roles back in the, I guess, August and September-ish. So we've been working on that really pointedly since we came into the district. And then we also have a parent group, who you heard Ms. Harris speak tonight, Ms. Irving I saw came in as well. So they have made a concerted effort in the community to engage with parents as well. And I think that that had a huge impact on closing that gap.
Essentially, why you see two options is because of all of that. That's it. We had one option until we really started opening our minds about what is best for our community, and it's our responsibility to share the options with the public and with the board, and that's what we're doing here tonight.
Yes.
So if it's decided to go the traditional property tax route, and let's say it taxes in May, but let's say in November, property taxes are eliminated, are we starting back at square one and having to go back and request an earned income tax?
It's a really good question, and we don't know, because we think that the state at that point would have to step in and come up with a different way to get that revenue, which would likely look like taxing something else, sales tax or something else, not property tax, but we're going to see it. So we just, we don't know what that looks like in terms of how they're going to get it to the schools, but we hope that that's what would happen, is that the state would step in. We don't know. So there's a lot of uncertainty around that right now. Any other questions? May I take this one and...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, back here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I got some questions on the ballot. Is, they're saying it never passes. So what are the other actions financially you'd like to do? In fact, you know, we teach this stuff to kids, we teach it, I have a child in high school, and that's...
Yes, ma'am.
...way up there, I'm first in the house.
Yes.
Happens all the time.
Right. I got two children, they're in different classes. Like, I'm already pressing myself, because I'm no transition man.
Right.
Having to figure out how everybody would get picked up and get dropped off to school. So now I'm part of it. I wanted to come out with me, and now I'm picking up other people's kids, which is fine, because you need to leave, so I'm okay with that. But what if it never passes? So being what an action, what are you looking at then?
Yeah, more cuts. So unfortunately, we have cut a lot of staff. We do not have much else to cut in terms of staff. So really, our enrollment is down a little bit, so, you know, we maybe will lose staff. Just people who leave at the end of the year may not be replaced if we don't need them based on enrollment numbers. So there could be some reduction in expenditures there. Outside of that, unfortunately, it's specials like art and music and PE, it's sports, and we know that that's not what's best for our community. We know that we have a lot of kids who, that's their lifeline. My own children are involved in sports in our community that I live in, and I can't imagine what our life would look like without sports. And I know that's true for the kids in our district, too. So that is definitely not the route the district wants to go, but we're running out of things to cut because we have to provide an education. That's why the school district is here. And so anything extraneous beyond just providing the education is going to end up being cut if we don't find a way to get some more revenue into the district. Unfortunately, there's just not any other way for us to generate revenue besides relying on our community. Yes?
I was just wondering, you said that the earned income would not tax residents on social security. What about our families who are receiving assistance? Would they not be subject to that earned income tax as well?
Correct. If there's no earned income, then you would not be subject to the earned income tax. Only income earned through wages, tips, et cetera.
Yep. So if both, if both things are true, then the situation is addressed in that manner. So you don't, if I get a paycheck and supplemental assistance, I'm not taxed on both of those. It's work only.
Right. But like regular tax, there's like a level where you're not taxed if you're under this level. Would that still be the case, or would everyone be taxed on everything?
Right, on earned income. So, yeah.
So all earned income?
Correct. Yes.
Right.
Okay, I think we'll do one more question. We're right at about 10 minutes, and I want to give the board a chance to have some open discussion as well. So, Michael?
I think I answered some of Ms. Richards', and I didn't really understand her answer. Is there any good in community writing, Department of Education, to release that solvency assistance?
I think advocacy is always good. So it can't hurt. So whether that's a longer extension, I think what the state and the commission are looking for is that we are at a point where we can say, we've made all the cuts that we possibly can, and in good faith, need more assistance. And so, but again, advocacy from the members of our community and our staff never hurts, for sure. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the board if you'd like to have any discussion about this amongst yourselves.
I'll say that the idea that they might be getting rid of property taxes scares me a lot, because who knows what that would look like? I'm assuming they wouldn't grandfather in the old ones. It would just be, you know, I don't know how they could say, oh, okay, the way we fund schools, which is not legal according to the Ohio Constitution, we're not even going to do that anymore? I don't know what that would look like, and yeah, they would have to have some kind of plan to address that, but that's really scary to me, and not having to rely on that seems like a good, a good shift to be making.
Yeah. But on the other hand, I mean, just like Dr. Wilson said, we have a lot of retirees in our district, and the fact that the earned income credit is going to bring in more than the 5.35, was it?
5.95.
5.95. The fact that it's going to bring in more than the 5.95 levy just tells me that more money is going to come out of the pockets of people who are not retired, because we can't be making that much more money with fewer people unless there's a significant increase in how much it's going to cost for the individuals that are paying for it. And most of our families are already, especially families that are younger, I mean, not to say that the older retired ones are not, but we have so many families that are younger families that are very much struggling and have, you know, a person who's in a single-income household have to do that. But then when you add in, if you have somebody who's in a two-income household, now we're just doubling up on them, you know? And that's already hard enough if we're going to take money out from property taxes, but now we're essentially saying, we're not going to do the property tax, we're just going to charge you twice. So it does make me fear that we will lose so many votes that we've already been able to count on. We're going to get the retirees and swap them out for the people who are actually maybe having kids in the district and are of the age that they already care enough to pay. We're just going to make a swap one for the other.
Yeah.
Yeah. Demographically, who votes in our district? Right, retirees.
Yes, that's true. That's...
And I do understand that, but it's, for me, it's not just how do we make this pass? I mean, yes, I care about that, but once it passes, I want people to be able to afford to live here. So it's not just how do we make this pass? How do we cater to only the people who are voting? I want to make sure that we're not putting too much on, even the people who don't show up to vote, I want them to still be able to thrive. Well, not thrive, maybe not thrive, because nobody's thriving, but survive.
I did a quick calculation, it's pretty scary what that would mean for my own household.
Yeah, it's terrifying. I mean, it wouldn't mean that much for my, I have a single-income household, it wouldn't mean that much for mine, but I just know, I know that there are a lot of people that would really, really struggle.
Unfortunately, there's just no great way to do this. There just isn't. And if anybody in the country has found the perfect way to fund schools, I haven't heard about it.
Mm-hmm. Did, oh, okay.
So I hit a quick Google search, and average income in Mount Haly is $42,000. You take .75 of that, and it's $315 a year. So if you divide that by 24, twice, most people get paid twice a month, that's $13.12 every two weeks.
So that's like $26 a month, but if we have two incomes in the household, that's a little over $50 a month, which is more than what they would be paying on property Plus, you have a lot of, I think, older students that are working to try to help their families as well, and they're earning earned income. They'll be taxed on that as well. Maybe we said this part, I don't think so, but if I missed it, I apologize. Is there, are there any, like, term limits on it? Is this just an indefinite? Once we make the choice, it stays there indefinitely?
It does. So unless the board, unless sometime down the road, we find ourselves in a better financial position to where the board could come back and pass a resolution to reduce the income tax, that is something that's allowable. But outside of that, it goes indefinitely. The property tax levy we're proposing would be continuing as well, which goes indefinitely.
What I like about the income tax levy is it kind of adjusts itself right now. With the property tax levy, it's adjusting down automatically based on inflation, which I think is, has had a terrible impact on our...
...ability to raise revenue.
So I do like that fact that it's kind of, it's built in. So I do like that. I do like also that it meets the need, you know, we're going to... You know, we're gonna, you know, I definitely feel like if we're gonna make an effort towards anything, which I did not like that about the three mil levy, but if we're gonna make an effort, it should meet the need that the district has. It's, it's, it's tough, but as a community, having lived in this community for over 20 years and not having had a levy passed, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's one of those things where all accounts come due. Like, we have to invest in our community, period. Our kids are worth it. So our community does not get better if we do not invest in it. And that's true whether we're talking property taxes or we're talking, working in the community in other forms and fashions. That's just, that's life, that's, that's the world we live in. So if we don't invest here, ourselves here, then we should not expect to reap greatness here. Right? So, so, so the challenge for us then is to say, okay, what are we gonna add up and do?
Is there, so there are these hundreds of school districts that have gone to the income tax?
Over time, yes.
Over time. Is there any kind of data available on how that has impacted, like, higher income districts versus lower income districts? Because I think Ms. Anderson is right. For a lower income district, that could hit working families a lot harder. Is, is there any kind of, has there been any data collected that we could use to, to help us see what that might mean for our community?
I, I can certainly look into that. We have, that, that's one reason that we didn't want the vote to be on the same night that we presented the information because we wanted to offer a chance for discussion and processing of the information as well as you guys live in the community. So you may be talking to your neighbors or your friends about this over the next couple of days to get feedback. So I, I can look into the different types of districts that have the income tax and their demographics and see if there's one that's similar to ours.
We can provide data. We've been working with a lot of people across the field to try to find what's best for our community and to, you know, offer up the suggestions. So we can find some data to help you guys understand that.
So I, I did wanna reiterate that we will be putting out a notice for a special meeting. The special meeting is gonna take place on Thursday. That meeting is when the board will actually vote on what is going to be placed on the ballot and will move forward at that time. So I wanna make sure that our community is aware of that that will be taking place and there will still be a public input, period, at the beginning of that meeting, just like all meetings. So if there are folks from our community who would like to come and provide input at that time or who would like to reach out to board members between now and then to provide feedback or input, that is welcome and, and greatly appreciated.
And if you have.
It'll be at 6:00 P M.
And if you have additional data to share with us?
We will.
Share.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along to, let's see, item E. Okay, for the members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave the meeting. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Great Oaks Board Report. I have it on my phone here. So our meeting was last Wednesday on the 4th. Mary Cleveland was elected OSBA president for 2026. The gavel was passed to Mary Cleveland at the OSBA conference in Columbus on November 18, 2025, marking the beginning of her term as the 2026 president of the OSBA. This position reflects her longstanding dedication to public education and her remarkable record of service. And Mary Cleveland does serve on the Great Oaks Board with me, for those who are not familiar with her. Carrie Benning, Aspire Supervisor, serves voluntarily as president of the Great Oaks Education Foundation, a separate 501(c)(3) charitable organization. She provided an informational update on the foundation's objectives, activities, finances, goals, and outcomes. The foundation fills a need by helping to eliminate barriers in Great Oaks students' educational pathways, administers scholarships, and provides a mechanism to support career tech student organizations affiliated with Great Oaks career campuses. The committee chair Spencer Bradley reported that the nominating committee would be making the recommendation at the board meeting on January 14th to elect J.B. Stamper as chair of the board and Sandy Herod as vice chair for 2026. And finally, Harry Snyder shared updates on construction projects across the district. The Diamond Oaks Aviation Building has officially broken ground and is now in the early stages of development. Meanwhile, the Scarlet Oaks Phase 1 Health Academy project is scheduled to begin on Monday, December 8th, which is today. And that's all I have for the Great Oaks Report. The Legislative Liaison Report, Mr. Carter?
Okay. All right, Legislative Report, December 2025, Property Tax Valuation and School Revenue. A large percentage of legislation this month involves property tax reform, something that, of course, directly affects Malheath's revenue picture, especially as we manage fiscal emergency. House Bill 124, Tax Assessment Studies, alters how the Department of Taxation studies sales assessment ratios. Could impact us in the future if, of course, we, well, it's gonna impact us in the future. House Bill 129, 186, 309, and 335, these four bills collectively aim to cap property tax growth and allow county commissions to reduce millage in certain situations retroactively. I, I'm sorry, and retroactively credit taxpayers for inflationary increases. Recently introduced tax bills, House Bill 575, 590, 598, and 608, further reforms to agricultural land tax, property tax appeals, and new residential stability zones. It's too early to really determine the impact of what those are gonna be. House, I'm sorry, Budget Cleanup and Education Policy Adjustments. House Bill 434, Budget Corrections, there's several in there. Transportation Bill includes multiple education-related provisions. I'm sorry, it says originally a transportation bill, it now includes multiple education-related provisions. So it expands property tax exemptions for charitable conservation groups. It adjusts classifications for newly opened community schools, which can affect the state calculations. It limits counts for economically disadvantaged students, so districts cannot exceed enrolled ADM. Increases investments in Teach for America by $2 million per year and expands eligibility for local homestead exemptions without income requirements. For Curriculum Instruction and School Operations, House Bill 10 has a cultivated protein ban. House Bill 114, Kindergarten Age and Biology Testing Fix. That's a situation where they adjust the kindergarten eligibility dates and hold students harmless for last year's biology exam scoring error. House Bill 184 is a major education cleanup, includes many operational changes. ESCs are exempted from administrative spending caps. ESCs are allowed expanded transportation options for students in Montgomery County. Mass transit may be used to transport grades nine through 12. Early childhood funding definitions are clarified. And the ODEW must publish annual reports on science and reading implementation. Looking ahead, General Assembly recess. The legislature is adjourned for the remainder of 2025 and will reconvene in January or February of 2026 to focus heavily on property tax implementation rules, ADM and funding formula clarifications, continued science of reading compliance, and bills relating to workforce and early literacy. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Report of the Treasurer.
Thank you, give me just a moment.
Sure.
Forgot my Britney Spears.
Put some glitter on it.
Okay, hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining me for my report this month. We are, again, sticking with our format that we have been working through. This is our cash summary report. It is now added altogether and subtotaled by fund. So you can see at your leisure, as you review it, our different amounts of funding across the district. Can see we have a lot going on with our funds to support our students. And the number that we wanna look at here to, yeah. Oh. Yes. I might have made a mistake.
Okay. So we're here first?
I'm apologizing right now to everyone. Hold on to this because we're gonna come back in just a minute. I'm sorry, guys, I'm a rookie in these meetings. I'm really excited for my report. If we're being honest, I am nerding out about it. Okay, apologies, and here we are. I don't have any additional informational items. I think you've heard enough from us tonight about those things. But I do have a request or two to address. The first one is a resolution that you will find in your board packet for advanced payment of taxes for the period of July 1st through June 30th, '26, '25 to '26. This is something that we have done before. However, it was in Mr. Soul's name and it needs to be in my name so that I can make the lettered request to ask for our taxes to be paid. Okay, do we have a motion to recommend, to authorize the interim treasurer to request the county auditor to make advance payments of taxes for the July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026? All right, that was Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Carter. Do we have any discussion? We do a roll call?
All right, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna do a remix on the same thing, except it's gonna be for July 1, '26, through June 30th, '27. This will allow me to, when it's appropriate in that fiscal year, to ask that the Hamilton County Auditor release our taxes to us.
Okay, we have a recommendation to authorize the interim treasurer to request the county auditor to make advance payments of taxes for July 1st, 2026, to June 30th, 2027. Do we have a second? That was Dr. Turner and Mr. Carter. Was there any discussion? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter? Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now it's my turn.
Now here's your favorite part, get up there. Okay, so as you see, our cash summary ending fund balance for this month is $9,637,903.37. That number's important because when we look at our reconciliation from our accounts, we will find the same number here. This shows all the differences that we have been tracking for our variances for our general funds specifically. Any questions about this? Okay. We do the same thing with our payroll accounts. Whoops, this is the reconciliation for our payroll accounts. And I will say, this is the last one from Jake. He did all the November payrolls for us. So we did start a new team with new payroll for this month, just to let you know. You'll be seeing some of that change coming through to you tonight and into our future as we build a new team. Nothing out of the ordinary for our payroll report. Any questions? All right, thank you. Now we're gonna move into the workbook. Can see that Dr. Wilson and I signed off on all of the information here. Now, on this tab, on this spreadsheet, we are looking for things in the body that are pink, okay? So when something's pink, it differs just a little bit, hopefully, off of what we estimated. So last month, we had some larger bills in our purchase services that were for six months instead of a monthly. So it made our purchase services look a little higher than they should have that month, but that's because they had a longer span of time, okay? So now when you're here in the November variance, for example, when you're looking at your expenditures, I don't see any pink. So that's good. Our expenditures are back on track, all right? So that helps us monitor yearly where we're at in accordance to our fiscal recovery plan. All of this is like a monthly dive into how are we doing regarding our fiscal recovery plan? And our financial forecast, it's all embedded, okay? So over here, we're looking at a favorable or an unfavorable columns for the year. And over here, we're just looking at the month for this month, okay? Here's some pink here. I believe that that's down a little bit because our student count is down a little bit. So it's a little less than what we had estimated based on the numbers that we predicted. This line right here is also revenues that are down. But this line, which is other revenues, is variable. So it can be payments from a lot of different things like facility rentals, preschool fees, Medicaid payments, all kinds of variables in this line. Since it's not crazy high over here, we feel pretty good about it, but we'll continue to monitor. And this one is the one that Dr. Wilson and I are doing a study on. This is called Other Financing Sources. And there's a dead amount across this entire forecast. And we have to dig in and find out if we need to change those estimates or not because it's not shaking out how we want it to. So we need to research that. And we just don't have enough information to make changes yet. So we're leaving it like that so it stays on our list of things to do. All right, any questions about this? Okay, I'm happy that we have limited pink because some situations could be a lot of pinks. And we are doing pretty good. On the next page, it's kinda like in your packets, is a little narrative about everything I just talked about. And you'll see here, it's by month. So you can just review in narrative form if need be on what I've presented. So you can just review in narrative form, if need be, on what I've presented. Okay, there's no change on this report since we've looked at it to any great degree. But this is the reconciliation process in the workbook form. So everything we talked about first, with our cash summary and our payroll reconciliation and our general fund reconciliations, is in the workbook. Same data paired up, same data to that. And we just keep a control of it every month that way so that we know that we're on track. Did you have any questions before about the reconciliations? Were you good? Okay, great. Okay, this is by far my favorite. This is our fund accounts. And this show, our fund balances, rather. So, remember when we talked about when there's a lot of pink? It's not gray and it's annoying. I've worked really hard on this since I've started taking care of it to turn all the pinks to blue on here. So we're going to look at it today. All right, so you can see these top funds. This is our general fund. This is food service. This is like our ELC bond retirement. These are internal services, like building activities, like field day. These are public school support accounts. You can see like hospitality and wellness. Some buildings call it hospitality, some call it wellness. It's just supports to collect for the well-being of everybody in our buildings. And then we start getting into some grants and things like that as time goes by. So, you can see that we have mostly blue up here, which is very good news. And you can see that we've got rid of all of these pinks and we're now all blue. So these are no longer negative account fund balances. Same with this. And this pretty little area right here is all of our grants that are based on a reimbursement basis. So we've got to spend the money first, and then we collect the money back through what's called a project cash request or a PCR, okay? So, this is a really good month to talk about this because it's the final month for this year for our consolidated final expenditure reports. So hopefully, by the time we meet next time, anything that's not an FY '26 will be blue on these because we'll have them behind us and they'll be paid out. If not January, February. It depends how fast the state processes those things. Now, in the past, we've had a hard time with keeping up with that on a monthly basis and a yearly basis. But Mr. Kinsey and myself, along with everybody in the treasurer's office, has worked really hard to turn everything blue with this kind of stuff and to get our money on a monthly basis versus large wafts of cash every six months or something like that. So, just know that's the process and the rationale behind it. Any questions about funds? I scared her away. Okay. Oh, this is our staffing for the month and for the year. We track it across time. So, last month, we had 191 certified employees. Now we have 192. And the explanation to that is that one person that's leaving is still on payroll, and the person that is replacing them is also on payroll. So we should see that dip back down after that normalizes. This is classified. Last month, we had 87. This month, we have, I think that says 93. It's hard to see. But we did hire some aides that were required by students that moved in with IEPs that needed that. And I would say there is a good bit of turnover with aides. So sometimes that's just replacing too. So this number is much more likely to wiggle around a little bit more than the certified. Yeah. So yeah, any questions about that? All right. Okay, that is it for my financial report. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the November 2025 monthly financial reports? Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Carter and Dr. Turner. Was there any discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. It looks like the next order is to approve contracts that are listed here?
Do we have a motion, excuse me, to approve the contracts, please?
So move. Second.
That's Mr. Carter and Dr. Turner. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Absolutely. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Next, we have approved purchase orders over 5,000.
Do we have a motion to approve the purchase orders?
So move.
Dr. Turner and Mr. Kilgore? Is there any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
A roll call. I am very tired and not feeling well today. I'm sorry.
I just double-guessed myself. Okay, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Wilson?
So, tonight is our last regular meeting for two of our board members who will be leaving us after this month. So, they didn't know when they came to this last regular meeting that they were going to have another meeting on Thursday. But I did want to present them with this token of our appreciation. It is a crystal that just says, "Thank you for your service to Mount Healthy City Schools." So first, this is for Mr. Will Carter. Mr. Carter, did you want to say anything?
So, first of all, thank everyone for just being an amazing and have been doing. I just, I'm so thankful to have been part of this organization and this operation. You have a daunting the challenge that you will come through for our kids because we absolutely need you to. But beyond that, it has been a learning experience. It has been, I'm glad I was what I was going to do when I came in as a board member. But what needed to be done, I really appreciate it and I'm looking forward to what you guys
Thank you. Okay, and we have Dr. Julie Turner. We thank you for your years of service as well. Did you want to say anything, Dr. Turner?
I'll just, I will echo what Will said. It's been such an honor to work with such a great group of people. The staff here, the administration here, the dedication and the devotion is just incredible to see all the time. And I'm going to miss you guys. Not enough to run for reelection. It's been 12 years, so moving on, but it's been wonderful. And I hope you all stay on with us for a long time because you do great work.
I also wanted to note that our previous superintendent, Dr. Valerie Hawkins, who could not be here with us this evening, is retiring at the end of December. And so I just wanted to take a moment to thank her for her contributions and service to the district as well, even though she could not be with us this evening. And we wish her the best as she goes into retirement and hope that she gets to spend lots of time with her family and especially her grandchildren. And then, I wanted to note that the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Office for Exceptional Children has awarded our district a Job Coach Skills Trainer Project Grant, and that is in the amount of $11,400. So we'll be able to use that to support some of our special education students in the district. So we're excited about that. Second time, yeah. And thanks to the team, Leslie's team and Kristen, for working on that. Okay, item B is acceptance of donations. So, a recommendation to accept the following donation. It is $750 to North Elementary from the Silver Family Foundation.
So move.
All right, perfect. Thank you, guys. That's what I needed, apparently. All right, was there any discussion? Could we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yep.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is approval of the resignations as listed there.
Do we have a motion to approve the resignations?
Second.
Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Carter? Was there any discussion? Could we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Next is a recommendation to approve the following certified personnel.
Do we have a motion to approve the certified personnel?
So move.
Dr. Turner, do we have a second? Mr. Kilgore, was there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item E is a recommendation to approve the classified personnel as listed.
Do we have a motion to approve the classified personnel?
So move.
Dr. Turner, can we have a second? Mr. Carter? Was there any discussion? Could we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is a recommendation to approve the supplemental positions as listed.
Do we have a motion to approve the supplemental positions? Mr. Kilgore, can we have a second?
Second.
That was Dr. Turner. Was there any discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item G is the approval of a contract change for the employee listed.
Do we have a motion to approve the contract change?
So move.
Dr. Turner, can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kilgore? Was there any discussion?
Just a salary adjustment for additional semester hours as part of the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement.
Any additional questions? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item H is to approve a rate increase for substitute food service cooks. So, we are recommending that we increase the hourly rate for substitute food service cooks to $14 per hour. Right now, all of our substitute food service workers are on the same pay, which is $13 an hour. And we are having a lot of trouble finding substitute cooks specifically. And so, Food Service would like to increase the rate for that sub-cook pay to $14 an hour. And that is all paid out of Food Service Bonds, the O6 account.
Do we have a motion to approve the rate increase for the substitute food service cook?
So move.
Dr. Turner, can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kilgore, was there any discussion? Okay, could we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's it for my items.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Item 6 is open discussion by the Board of Education. Was there anything that the board would like to discuss at this time?
I just want to say thank you for running the meeting. You said you were tired and not feeling well. Also, not feeling well, so...
Well, I think I'm doing a little better than you tonight, so... Yeah, absolutely.
No problem.
Any other discussion?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays.
Well, we'll see you on Thursday. We'll see you on Thursday. You're not out of here until Christmas. Thursday, we have a meeting.
I took that all back.
Yeah. Ask him on Thursday whether or not he wishes you happy holidays. Okay, at this time, we are, is that correct? We are going into an executive session. And this executive session will be to consider one or more of the following items with respect to a public employee or official appointment, dismissal, discipline promotion, or demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So move.
Second.
All right, we're going to go into executive session at 7:29. Could we do a vote?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right. Do we have?
There will not be a vote after...
We will not have anything happening, any action items, after the executive session. So you are all welcome to wait for us to return, but there will not be anything of significance.
Just the date and times of the public meeting. But yeah, that's it. Nothing voted, right?
Nothing voted on?
Oh, the pub, the public hearing.
Oh, the date and times? Okay. Well, if you'd like to stick around and hear us vote on the date and times of next year's meetings, you are also welcome to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Executive session at 8:09. Moving on to item eight, approving the date and time for public hearing on the budget. Do we have a motion to approve the January 12, 2026 at 5:30 PM for the public hearing on the budget? Mr. Carter, do we have a second?
Second.
That was Dr. Turner. Was there any discussion? Okay, can we have a vote?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, item B, approve the date and time for the organizational meeting and regular meeting for January. As of right now, we would like a motion to approve that meeting for January 12, 2026 at 6:00 PM.
So move.
Mr. Kilgore, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Turner, was there any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Abstaining.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm supposed to be voting on these either. I'm not going to be there, so.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Sure.
Don't know if it hurts. I don't know.
You can come as a guest.
Oh, I'm sure she can't wait to do that.
Yeah, you still going to come to all of the board meetings?
I'm going to take a little time off first.
Yeah. I don't blame you at all. Okay, item C, approving a temporary chairperson. I will just go ahead and nominate myself as the temporary chairperson. Motion to approve myself, Stephanie Anderson, for the meeting in January.
So move.
Second.
Okay, that was, what? That was Dr. Turner and Mr. Kilgore. Did you say second? Oh, I don't remember who said it. Mr. Carter. Was there any discussion on that? Either of you, would you like to, to fight me for that role? No, I don't see any fights. Okay, can we do a vote?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, the date of the next Board of Education meeting will be December, nope. Is it?
January 12?
Well, it's, well, January 12th is technically the next regular meeting.
At, well, it'll be 5:30 for the organizational, right? And then 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. We have a commission meeting on December 17th, but we also have a special meeting on Thursday, this coming Thursday, December 11th, to discuss and vote on the levy, the type of levy, right?
Right.
So we have a lot of upcoming stuff happening. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Did you have something to? Oh, sorry. You were looking at me like, like I was crazy. Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Dr. Turner? All in favor? Oh, nobody seconded, sorry. Kilgore seconded.
All right.
Adjourned at 8:13.